Session for April 19th. And the mayor is here. Thank you for being here, Mr. Mayor. Our first item is to hear-
Thank you.
Our first item is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the budget for three departments, specifically transportation, transit, and parks and recreation and community facilities. Can I have stuff come up? All right, we're going to start with RJ. Transportation.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. With me this morning, to my left, is Gordon Hawes, Deputy Director for Field Operations, and Eric Gudarian, Deputy Director for Engineering. So, thanks for giving us the chance to talk a little bit about transportation. But feel free to jump in and ask any questions you have as we're going along. Our mission statement is pretty straightforward. Planning, designing, and operating and maintaining a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system. I'm not going to read all these to you, but these are the services that our department is responsible for, both within field operations and traffic engineering. I generally say, if you can see it within the public right-of-way, there's a good chance we have some part of maintaining that Some performance measures, you know, quickly. This is a good visual. We have staff within Gordon's team that are continually evaluating the condition of our asphalt infrastructure. So, you'll see on the left of the slide is pavement condition index is from zero to 100, but this kind of gives you a sense of what a 30 would look like compared to a new road, which is 100. And then on the right, these are different surface treatments that we would use on our roadways. And you can kind of see before and after, both what the increase in the PCI would be, but also visually, you know, what it means, you know, to do this work on our streets. Along those lines, again, as a zero to 100, our street network overall is at about a 77. Our goal is 70, so we're above our target, and then just a few numbers below on different types of streets. But again, there's a planning effort that's involved in this, not only with Gordon's team, but in the case where there's more significant work that has to be done in terms of mill and overlay, then we work with our partners in the engineering department to do that work. Another performance measure, because we know this is important to people, is streetlight repair. Our goal is five working days, but our actual performance right now is about 3.65 days. So, we really do take this seriously in terms of getting out and getting streetlights repaired. The only thing that could affect this number is if there's a power problem and we're working, say with SRP, you know, that could, that could take things out a little longer. But we stay in contact with residents who are making Graffiti abatement. Again, our goal is one day repair or one day abatement. You know, our goal is 90% of calls will be abated within one day. We're actually at about 95.6%. If I showed you a chart of our graffiti abatement, actually the bulk of the graffiti incidents are noted by our staff. So, our staff are very proactive. We're not just sitting back and waiting to hear about graffiti instances. We're actually going out and looking for them. And I think our staff and Gordon's team does a great job responding to that. Along these lines, we noted in the police and fire presentations that there was talk of some training programs that they had in particular for youth. So, we wanted to show you one of our training programs. So, I'll set this slide up. This is the graffiti abatement training program. So-
I actually recorded a guy last Saturday.
Yes, you did. You could use your app, right? The CityLink app to report that. So, this has actually turned into a pretty fun event. These are showing some kids, but you'll see the parents in there, right there with them, trying to see who can cover up the, our graffiti wall the quickest. So, it was a great event this past Saturday. Pavement treatments. Our pavement inventory is roughly 3,600 miles. So, with this number, you can see that we're, our goal is to get out and touch about one-third or a little less than one-third of our pavement infrastructure every year. And again, this could be anything from pavement patching, which is what this picture shows, for different levels of seals, and again, working with engineering on more significant overlay projects. Not only is the hard scape or asphalt and concrete infrastructure important, but so is the aesthetic side of our public rights of us. So, these are just a couple of photos. They kind of show some before and after. The first is in the downtown area, Country Club Drive and Second Avenue. And the second is on Dobson Road between Guadalupe and the US 60. We'll talk about that a little bit more as we go along in the presentation. Another project we're proud of is the Stadium Connector that connects our two baseball stadiums. We actually wrote it yesterday. Some staff from the city manager's office and I wrote this. And it's easy to connect from that up to the Rio Salado path, you know, and you can take that all the way, you know, into Tempe and beyond. So, certainly one of our goals is to continue to build out our shared use paths. And one unique feature of this project is it's the first two-way cycle track in the region where you'll have the path on one side of the street with riders being able to, or walkers being able to go in both directions. Challenges. We all have our challenges. So, in transportation, we've kind of lumped these into two major categories. You know, the city continues to grow, so we're adding infrastructure, of course, that we have to plan for and maintain. And the infrastructure we have is getting older, so we need to stay on our game in terms of maintaining that. Technological changes. This can fall both within field operations as well as traffic engineering. Gordon's team is always looking for new asphalt treatment materials, you know, to see what has longer longevity, better cost, better performance. Within Eric's group in traffic engineering, you know, we're continually evaluating and monitoring what's going out there, in particular with autonomous vehicles. I wish I could tell you exactly where that's all going to land in terms of the impacts on our infrastructure, but we don't know. For example, when Google Waymo came into the valley, their, their approach was, we're not asking the cities to do anything with their infrastructure. We are looking to adapt to the real-world conditions that exist. But there's also, you'll hear these terms, V to I, which is vehicle to infrastructure. So, are there changes that we're going to have to make to our infrastructure that allow cars to talk? You know, there's, you know, you can go V to V, which is vehicle to vehicle, but are we going to have to barcode our signs, you know, to provide information, that sort of thing? Eric's team right now is already sharing some of our real-time traffic signal data. Some of the larger car manufacturers are doing predictive signal timing that would actually project into the cars and tell people what's ahead. So, you know, that's an example where we have to push our information out to the public, and we're already doing that. So, stay tuned. Be a lot more to come.
On the asphalt, are there any new exciting technologies on the asphalt that you guys are experimenting with that will allow it to last longer so that we're not having to replace streets so often?
We are doing some pilot programs. For now, I'll let Gordon touch on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. Yes, we are doing a pilot study right now where we are looking at four different quarter sections throughout the City of Mesa and testing four different new asphalt designs. We are including in one of those quarter sections recycled asphalt. And in another one, we've got some binders that are, have a little, they rubberized asphalt in them that make them perform longer. And so, we're comparing these different materials and comparing the costs, and we'll come back with some recommendations about where we think that'll take us in terms of the development community and our city projects.
Here's a five-year expense trend looking forward. From an overall standpoint, the transportation budget is relatively flat. But what we've tried to do last year in going into this year is to identify more projects that we can try to get done. And that's both, again, in our asphalt, but we're also trying to do more landscape refurbishment projects as well. And that's why you'll see the trend upward towards our estimate for the end of this fiscal year. You'll see, probably not surprising, that the bulk of our money goes to field operations. If you're looking at the proposed FY '18, '19 budget, and then, so that's just under $37 million, and about $7 million is supporting our traffic engineering operations. Base budget, real quick. Our two largest funding sources, as you probably know, are local street sales tax, which is a third of a cent. That's used, obviously, to maintain our transportation infrastructure, as well as highway user revenue funds, which are pushed down from the state. Motorfield taxes, license and registration fees are the bulk of that. Obviously, we're always watching this particular revenue source as the state historically has been moving 90-plus million dollars a year off the top to fund public safety operations at the state level. So, we do keep an eye on this one because it's obviously important to the, the work that we do. In the proposed budget, you'll see a couple of ads that we are suggesting for the next fiscal year. The first is to continue working with our partners in the Economic Development Department to continue branding in the Falcon District. If you've been through that, that part of the city, you'll see sort of the iconic, you know, blue that we're going with. We've been working with them on wraps, and I think there's some signage and some work that continues. So, we'll continue to support that work within the public right-of-way. The next is an item that came out of Imagine Mesa, actually, was to better identify entry points into the city. So, the idea actually was monument signs. They can be expensive and require property, you know, acquisition and that sort of thing. So, we kind of tweaked that a little bit, and what we're proposing to do is that high volume, we would, if this is approved, we'd work on this over time. But if you can picture the illuminated street signs that we have in the downtown and in a few other sections of Mesa, that we would propose to install those at. This would fund about five locations for the first year, and then we would continue. As we discussed earlier, landscape refurbishment is very important in terms of maintaining the aesthetics of our right-of-way. So, we're asking for an additional $350,000. Again, these come from existing transportation funds, so we're not asking for funds to be brought in from another source, but used resources that we already have to continue to do more, more projects. And then below are just a couple of projects that are in progress right now. Under consideration, so this is not currently in our proposed budget, but it's, it's an idea that came out of some conversations related to our shared use paths. So, this would be a traffic signal at Southern and the Eastern Canal. And what we're showing here in, in this graphic, and Eric can talk about it more if you have questions, is that there's a hard surface that exists right now from Broadway, you know, all the way to the city limit and connecting into Gilbert. So, with the addition of a traffic signal at this location, it would make the use of that, you know, section of canal path more safer for, for everyone to use. We have a number of existing projects, a couple recently completed. Again, we talked about Stadium Connector path, recently completed the Mesa Gateway Shared Use Path in Councilmember Thompson's district. As you know, the Elliott Road construction project is about to kick off out in East Mesa, which we're excited about. We're, we're waiting for some work from the railroad to complete a railroad quiet zone project that would have a benefit to our residents who live near the Union Pacific Line, and then several other projects that are either in bid or going to bid, as well as some design projects moving forward in different parts of the city. Questions?
Any questions, Council? Mr. Thompson?
Just a couple of things. One, thank you guys for all that you do. I know that it feels like I, I'm, either I or Alicia are on the phone with you guys at least once a week about issues in District Six because we have quite a few, and most of them are related to transportation. So, thank you for reacting quickly. The only really question I had was on the streetlights. Getting to the slide here. So, 3.65 days is our average time, but we're paying, we're paying the electric bill on those irregardless of whether the light's on or off, right?
That's correct.
Is it the fixed cost per month?
There's a pole charge, and then there's a wattage charge depending on how, what the fixture is that's mounted.
So, is there, is there a way that we can, is there a way that we can get our contractors or get a contractor that can fix the light quicker? Because if we're paying for it, you know, I would rather, I'd rather pay the energy cost for a light that's actually operating than an energy, energy cost for a light that's just sitting there not illuminating. And-
I think to answer your question, I can defer to Gordon as well, Councilmember, that, again, our goal is to get out there as quickly as we can and get those lights fixed. And that's where the three days, you know, comes in because it is important to us, you know, to get those fixed. Where the time can come in sometimes where it's out of our control. If there's, if there's a fault somewhere, you know, in an electric cable, you know, we're tied to SRP. City of Mesa staff do great, you know, within our electric service area, but Gordon's staff may have to do a little prodding. I mean, SRP, I don't want to say SRP is bad, but that, that can cause a delay.
Are they timely? Is SRP timely in our request if there is a fault?
Councilmember Thompson, they generally are very timely. We do have to sometimes prod them, as RJ mentioned. But generally, they're responsive to our requests.
So, as you're aware, kind of to follow on your question, you know, with the streetlight master plan study that is ongoing, rates are going to be a big part, you know, of that, that work. You know, there's two ways you can track streetlights from a, from a billing standpoint. Most of our, our streetlights are not metered. So, again, it's back to that fixed, you know, cost. It would be challenging to try to go back in and retrofit and create a metered system because that would be the best way, you know? Because then you're paying for what you use, and if a light happens to be not functioning, obviously, you're not paying for, you know, energy that's not passing, you know, into, into the fixture. But that's going to be a big part of the conversation as we look at the rate structure. I don't know if I'm directly on point with your question, but as you're probably aware, right now, the, the issue we're having with funding conversion to LED lights, which are more efficient, is that what are called wattage buckets are pretty broad. So, you could replace a high-pressure sodium fixture with a lower, you know, wattage, more energy-efficient LED fixture, but you're still within the same watt range, and that creates a challenge. But we are working with SRP. Phoenix actually was kind of ahead of us, and SRP has indicated a willingness to create smaller wattage buckets, so I think that's good news, so that we can try to capture savings. We're going to work on kind of our own structure with SRP, but we have been following what's going on in the valley. So, we're optimistic that we're going to be able to make some changes in our rates that will help us to be more efficient and, obviously, save money.
Has SRP been hesitant to go to a metered, a metered rate for, for lighting? Because, I mean, honestly, that would be the, it would be a cost savings on the energy side for, for you guys, what's in, you know, because I know probably a big portion of your budgets, probably the electric.
Well, it is. So, it's several million dollars a year, I know, is what we're paying in, in energy costs to both SRP and City of Mesa Electric. I don't think there's any objection or resistance by SRP to do, go to a metered system. It's how we build it, you know? Not exactly on point, but within traffic engineering, we have converted a number of our traffic signals to metered service for that reason, is that we feel we can better control, you know, what we're paying by only paying, you know, for what we're actually using.
Using.
And that system has been converted to LED in terms of the signal heads. So, you know, they're being more efficient in, in power, and we're able to capture those savings because it's metered. We can ask our consultant to bring that into the review. We're still early in the master plan, but we can certainly evaluate that.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Adia?
Question. How do you monitor the improvements for pavement? And is there a way that residents can identify if they have a pothole, or can they use like CityLink to do that? Or just a clarifying question?
The answer is yes. Councilmember, they can certainly use CityLink. We take requests many ways. You know, on a rare occasion, we'll have a walk-in to our building. A number of requests coming through CityLink. We get phone calls, we get emails, we get emails forwarded from, you know, council members, you know, or their assistants. So, there's a, a number of ways people can communicate with us, and we try to follow up. If it's a pothole, if it's an immediate issue, we have a hazard response team that is available to not only respond during the normal working hours, but we have folks on standby that can respond immediately. Sometimes they may do an interim repair, you know, and then we'll have to have Gordon's folks or a contractor come back out and do something more substantial. But that, those, those are immediate responses that are very important to us. Sometimes the calls are just, hey, when's my street going to be, you know, either sealed or repaved? And we have a, a new program called MicroPaver that tracks our pavement quality throughout the city, and Gordon's team uses that to plan for, for pavement maintenance. But we'll also try to tell people, hey, you know, we're going to be doing the surface seal in a year, repaving's further down the road, but if they have a specific concern, we'll go out and take a look. And it may be doing some cracked ceiling or some patching, you know, as an interim repair. But we try to be proactive and certainly be responsive when we get concerns.
One other question on, was it a pilot program? Is the yellow signal light, is that being expanded throughout the city, or is that-
The yellow, the turn arrow?
The turn arrow, yeah.
I'll let Eric talk on that for a minute.
So, just to clarify, the flashing yellow arrows? It's, it's not a pilot project. I think we had a pilot project about six years ago, and we are introducing them in any new location where we're putting in left-turn signals, not necessarily at major to major arterial intersections, but, but other intersections. That's the, the standard we're moving towards. We're not going to go, we have 462 traffic signals in the city. We're not going to go and retrofit all of them, but as we go and do replacements or we're building new ones, that's the standard we're moving towards.
Any other questions? Mayor Giles, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Briefly, I, I, I'd just like to express support for the, the Greenfield Park signal that you were suggesting earlier. I had an occasion to go to Greenfield Park with my grandkids in the middle of the day during the week, like two or three weeks ago, and every parking space in that park was full. It was, it was a lot of fun to see how, how popular that park is. And the idea, you know, that, as you know, that canal just wraps right around to the park, and I, I can really appreciate why we would think about putting a signal at that, at the, on Southern. It seems like that would really provide a great access for all the, the homes in that area to access the park, rather than parking in, in a full parking lot, come around on, on the canal. So, kudos to whoever came up with that idea. I think it's a great idea. Also, I'm just, I'm, I just want to express pride that, that I think a lot of people in Mesa have for the great bike ped path that we have and, and the completion of the Stadium Connector. I think it's a, you know, everywhere in the valley, we have this great resource of these linear parks, and I'm, I'm glad that Mesa is doing such a great job of capitalizing on that and developing, developing them. I would, I'd just like to talk maybe offline later about some ideas to promote the, the bike ped path so that it's utilized as much as it can be. But, but thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Whitaker, did you have questions?
Questions? I, I want to second what the mayor said on the light at Greenfield and Southern. And I just want to clarify on that. Is that one of the, and I'm totally going to mess the names up because I can never remember. I think they're called Hawk Lights, right? Where you push it, and it's like, it flashes red, but you can proceed if it's clear? Or is that an actual-
This would be an actual traffic signal. We find that-
Go ahead, Eric. Sure. I think at our shared use path crossing locations, we've chosen to do the full traffic signal instead of the pedestrian hybrid beacon because of the bike traffic that's on, on the canal system. That with the flashing red and people being able to go through, we have concerns that bikes won't be able to be seen if they're traveling fast enough as, as they're crossing. So, we're trying to make it safer by just holding everybody at, at those canal locations.
And when you say full, does that mean like it's a green, yellow, red, or like just a red and then no red?
It'll be green, yellow, red.
Eric, but it's, it's only activated if a pedestrian pushes the button.
Correct. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep. All along the consolidated canal where we have our shared use path, we have the full traffic signal.
Great. The other question I had, as I know that we had discussed in the past, ADOT owns the, the canal system, or the overflow on the north side of the 60. And obviously, that Greenfield Park can obviously, it can be connected a lot more if we were to work with ADOT and open up that path from like a bike, walk, run type of perspective. Have we made any progress on that, or is there any news you could share as far as if we're able to push forward?
We'll be talking more about that next week when the capital budget is, is presented. That is a project that is in a list of many projects that could be done, but we have identified-
So, the answer is we've been looking at it, but it'd be- Would be one of the projects that might be included if Councilor wanted to consider a future bond package. That would be one of those that would be included.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily, from a capital improvement perspective, I'm not necessarily saying that we need a ton of work, just necessarily working with ADOT and seeing if we can't remove the gate so that we can just actually use that path for pedestrians.
ADOT has been cooperative, working with us, the Southeast Path, for example, or the Mesa Gateway Path, I should say, in Councilmember Thompson's district was with an ADOT right-of-way. So, we have a history of being able to work on intergovernmental agreements and making that accessible to the public.
But there's some transition points we would want to have to get pedestrians to go into that area. So, but the good news is, is at least making it available. That's a big step right there.
Great. Thank you. And on slide five, I had a question. Looks like one of the steamrollers or something has a City of Mesa logo on it. Do we actually, does Mesa internally redo the streets, or do we hire contractors to pave the streets?
Vice Mayor, our council member would occur to mix. We have an, we have two in-house asphalt patch crews. One deals with potholes, actually, or issues around the city, kind of in general. And then we have a crew that focuses on utility patching. So, if one of the, one of our city departments, water resources, energy resources, you know, if there's a service cut or something where they have to go out and dig in the street, we have a crew that will respond immediately to do the patches on that, and then we back-charge the enterprise fund that's responsible. Much of our larger work, though, is done by contract, and all of our mill and overlay work, you know, where we go into a whole neighborhood, you know, and mill the surface and put you know, and mill the surface and put down new pavement, is all done by contract.
Might add, Councilmember Whitaker, the different, differentiating line is generally, within-house crews, we do maintenance, and with the, the out-of-house crews or with the contractors, we do the new construction. That's the general differentiator.
Okay. I know from sitting on my HOA board that it seems a lot of times that we own the streets and a lot of the HOA boards aren't necessarily prepared for the large capital expenditure to redo all of our streets. So, I, I don't know what role that the city could play in at least trying to help facilitate that or help reduce those costs, or at least help HOAs in a direction where they're not, where they're making wise decisions as far as their streets go.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we're more than willing to talk to HOAs. And I, I carry this, or we did it down in Chandler as well, where if an HOA, for example, has private streets, you know, and they're responsible for that asphalt, you know, they may not be experts, you know? And so, we're happy to give suggestions to them on what treatments might work, you know? The maintenance, you know, I could show you a, a maintenance curve, and Gordon can explain it better than I, of how much value there is in the pavement treatments in terms of extending the life of, of a street. But we're always one to, you know, even though it's private property, we're willing to help consult if, if folks need advice.
Yeah, and I guess I just mean on a more proactive basis. If there, if we can identify different HOAs that may have aging streets that are going to start to decrease the property value significantly in Mesa, perhaps we could send out a letter to their board to say, look, we're here to help you guys, or offer some form of assistance to make sure that the neighborhoods just aren't falling apart because people aren't paying attention.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, let us, let us explore that idea.
Great, thank you. And the last point that I want to make is, on the streets, you, you don't realize how good your streets are until you travel to a third world country, and then you know how good your staff is doing on streets. So, I want to thank you guys for that. I rarely ever see any graffiti, so I want to thank you guys for that. And to second, Giles also commented on the Stadium Connector. I, I love that path and thank you guys for doing that as well.
Thank you, and our engineering staff were key to that as well. So, thank you for the comment.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay, Mrs. Sorrell, she can talk about transit.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jody Sorrell. I'm the Transit Services Director. And I'm just going to quickly go over the transit budget, or the proposed transit budget for fiscal year 2019. In transit, our mission is to provide innovative, safe, and efficient transit options that support mobility, accessibility, and economic vitality. So, we do that through our bus system, our light rail operations, our paratransit services, and our ride choice service for seniors, and then our facilities, our bus stops, our transit centers, and our park and rides. As far as our performance measures go, for light rail, we are, we are so far through fiscal, through February of this year, we're carrying an average of about 189,000 riders per month. That puts us pretty much on target to meet our target goal for this year as far as ridership goes. On bus through February, we're carrying about 303,000 boardings per month on our fixed route system. And that's going to be, bring us in a little lower than our target. And that's just a challenge with fixed route buses happening nationwide as ridership is dipping a little bit due to the lower gas prices is always one cause for that. And then just changes in our economy with more people telecommuting, working at home, the Lyft and the Ubers kind of eat into that. So, there's just some changes that are happening. Our paratransit, we're carrying about 9,500, and our paratransit and ride choice numbers, these are through January, not through February. But through, with paratransit, we're carrying about 9,500 riders a month. And paratransit is a service that's restricted to our residents over 65, and 65 and who are disabled, who have been certified by Valley Metro as qualifying for that service. So, we carry about 9,500 trips per month on paratransit. And then Ride Choice is a taxi-based alternative service for paratransit. We try to make it more attractive as an option for that. We're carrying about 2,200 boarding trips per month on that. And so, our ride, our paratransit numbers for this year will probably come in about 20,000 trips less than last year and less than what we're looking at on the target. And a lot of that is due to we changed the model, how we provide it this year. Previously, it was a taxi-based service, and so people could call the day before and have a taxi come and take them, and they would ride by themselves. With the new contract that started in July, we rolled that back to being more consistent with the federal law and more consistent with what other paratransit communities do. So, you're more likely to get a shared trip on paratransit service. And that's been a big shift for people. They've gone back to the cutaway vans. There are some taxis being used, but that sharing of the trip has, has been an issue for some people. And then Ride Choice, we, we've made some changes in that, so it's more attractive as an alternate to, to paratransit. But we'll get into that later in the presentation.
Jody, I had a question. Do we work with Ride, with Lyft or with Uber?
We are, we are through Valley Metro. So, as a, as an East Valley, we are a subregion, so all the East Valley cities buy together from Valley Metro. And we are working to look at doing maybe a pilot program with the TNC. And later in the presentation, there's a discussion of Ride Choice and adding those into the Ride Choice program through a future contract that's coming up. And we'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, here's our five-year expenditure trend. As you can see, there is a big jump in our light rail expenditures in fiscal year 15, 16. And that was primarily due to the Central Mesa extension becoming operational. So, we went from one mile of light rail operations to four miles. So, that was a big jump in that cost. And then you can see in our estimate for 17, 18, there's a jump again. And that's, the Gilbert Road extension is scheduled to open in May of next year, so we'll have about two months of operational costs in that. And then our admin costs, transit admin costs are slightly higher, and that's for the funding for the Fiesta District Alterms Analysis Study and the Tempe Mesa Streetcar Study, which were approved in the, in this year's budget. Before we get into our actual budget, I kind of wanted to set some framework for what we get for transit and how much transit service we actually provide to our residents. So, transit is funded by two sources, the Transit Fund and Proposition 400, which is our regional sales tax, half-cent sales tax for transportation. About two-thirds of our fixed route bus service is funded by Prop 400. So, that's very important to us. And the bulk of our paratransit service is funded by Prop 400. So, while the city budget's almost $11 million for transit out of our own budget, we get another, you know, 13 and a half million from Prop 400 to provide, you know, $24 and a half million worth of service for all of our residents. So, this is our budget. As you can see, our proposed budget for fiscal year 18, 19 fixed route is going up slightly. Part of that is due to we are reallocating money from our transit operations and maintenance facility O and M to fixed route to extend evening service on the buzz, which is our circulator that runs from Riverview to downtown. Right now, it ends about 7:30 at night, so we want to extend that to 10 o'clock to get people, so they can get off work and get home, they can finish their dinner and not have to run home or finish their shopping. And just the cost per mile average goes up periodically. As we're talking about light rail, that accounts for, a big part of that is for the, the start of the Gilbert Road extension. Our paratransit service is, is going down a little bit, and a lot of that is due because we've amped up our Prop 400 funding to fund paratransit. And our transit admin is up higher, as I said, to fund the two studies that we approved from last year. It's a, they're multi-year studies, so they will continue over a couple fiscal years. The challenges that we have really facing transit in Mesa is, it's really two. It's managing our paratransit growth and increasing, increasing our fixed route frequency and trying to add new coverage. So, our paratransit growth, paratransit is a unfunded federal mandate, which is part of the Americans with Disabilities Act, that requires us to provide complimentary service within three-quarter miles of a bus route. As Mesa, we have chosen in the past to provide this service citywide. As we get, as our population gets older and the definition of a disability expands, we, our, our paratransit system is, and our, is just going to grow, and the usage of that is just going to grow. This map shows what the federal minimum, or the federal required service area would look like in Mesa. And just to kind of back up a little bit and give you about, we have a pool, we, we looked at our, our population, and there's about 25% of our population that could be the pool that could qualify for paratransit. So, that's about 120,000 people that are either over 65 or disabled within Mesa. Out of that pool, about 3% are actually certified to use DALLA Ride. And that's about 3,500 people. And then taking it down to the people that, there's people that go through to get certified and don't use the service, and I don't know, I can't figure out why somebody would do that, but they do. And then the people that actually use the service, it's about one and a half percent of our population. So, about 1,500 people actually use the service on a regular basis. About 1,200 of those people live within the, the federal minimum, the federal requirement, and about 400 live outside of that area. So, that, kind of putting some of those, that data into perspective. With some changes that we want to do in Ride Choice, so if we want to add, we're going out to secure a new Ride Choice provider and system. Right now, it's strictly cab-based. So, the system right now is, everybody's capped at 16 trips per month. You, unless you're going to want to take it, with exceptions being made for work, medical, and school trips. Because I'd rather take all of those reoccurring scheduled trips. And if Ride Choice is a better option for people, because you can call that day of, you can call that morning when you need it, it's a $3 trip. We want to get them, we want to have them use, use Ride Choice as much as they can, and they're welcome to. So, the fare for Ride Choice is, it's, the resident pays $3, and the city pays $15, up to $15 of that trip. So, that gets you about an $18 cab ride. And that, that cab ride will get you, depending on the cab fare, six to eight miles. The changes we want to make in Ride Choice going forward is changing it more to a miles based than a person, than an individual cap. So, the individual would still pay $3, but the city would pay up to that eight-mile trip, which would be somewhere in that $15 to $20 range, depending on if it was a cab or a taxi. And this is important, or if it cab or if it was an Uber or Lyft. And that is important if we're going to add the Ubers and Lifts into this, so that we want to make it a balanced system between all those providers. The circles on the map, the pink circle shows what an eight-mile radius from the Red Mountain Multi-Gem Center would look like. So, how far people could travel within that. And the blue circle shows what an eight-mile radius is around the Sunland Village. I always get, there's a lot of Sunlands. Sunland Village East, what, what that eight-mile radius looks like. And, well, we'll get back to that. So, then this is just a map to show you what are, what are, where the heat areas are, where the, more of those DALLA Ride trips or paratransit trips are taking place in Mesa, and how they fall within that, those circles. This anomaly in Southeast Mesa is, we've looked at it, and without getting really in, we didn't have time to go through all the, the addresses and stuff, is there's a high school down in that area? But we also know that along some of the borders, so along this anomaly and probably some of the, that along the, the 60, is people driving into the service area to be able to use DALLA Ride. So, if they don't live within the service area, they will come into the service area to be able to use that service. And, and that's what we think is, is probably increasing some of those costs, some of those driving that ridership up. But you can see on the map, about 90% of our DALLA Ride trips are to medical, school, or work. And you can see on the map where that is. You can see Banner Hospital being area, Banner Baywood, the Mark Center area, the Fiesta MCC, and Banner Baywood, not Banner Baywood, the other Banner, Banner, Desert, yeah, Desert, Banner Desert, over in the western part of the city. So, you can see where, where those, where those activities are. What we're proposing, how we're proposing to modify, some of the modifications to the service is to look at offering DALLA Ride within the federally required service area. This will help us manage our growth as, as people start, as that demographic starts increasing. And then in order to make that part successful, we need to make sure we have a really robust Ride Choice program. So, what we want, what we're proposing is to make Ride Choice available. If you want to use Ride Choice, you need to be ADA certified as well. And right now, we have about 225 people that actively use Ride Choice who are not ADA certified. So, it wouldn't be a huge certification, a huge imposition for, well, for Valley Metro, for an additional 225 people to come in and get certified. And we believe most of those people, probably, they should be certified anyway. And we want to, participants, we want to change the eligibility, so increase, so people can be eligible for 21-way trips or up to an additional 30 trips a month. So, you could get an additional 50 trips on Ride Choice if you were qualifying for that. And then change it from a cost per trip cap to a mileage cap. If we were to go ahead with this option, what we would recommend is, starting on July 1st, that all new Ride Choice participants must be ADA certified, that existing Ride Choice participants would have until December 1st to get certified. That's when the new Ride Choice contract would go into effect with Valley Metro, and when TNCs would start being included, most likely in that. And then through August through November, we would do some, work with Valley Metro and do a lot of intensive outreach into the area, especially into the, the area that would fall outside the federal service area, to help the residents understand the change and maybe help them educate on Ride Choice. Because these are two very, they can be a confusing service if you don't understand both of them. And a lot of, with this demographic, it's a lot of one-on-one conversation with them. You can't just send them a letter. And then in January, February, we would conduct a public hearing and come back to council for a final decision. Then we would go back out and educate on that decision, and then implement the change on July 1st of next fiscal year, of 2019.
So, Jody, can we go back to the previous map? The previous map, the dark outline, is the federal, federally mandated required service area, and they would stay in the paratransit service. Is that correct?
We want to go back, I keep hitting.
Your heat map.
If, go back to, not the paratransit destination map, but if you go back to look at the, the first map I showed, has the federally required service area, slide eight, that really shows what that, what that federal requirement would be in Mesa.
And that's the hashed, it's kind of underneath.
That's the hashing.
And that, how much does that cost the city? What's the cost of the city for that service?
Well, right now, for the whole DALLA Ride program, we pay about $4 million.
What's it per trip?
Per trip, it's $34, $34 to $35 per trip.
Okay. And so, that's what, and that's the federally mandated. And so, we're suggesting is, obviously, we have to provide that service. And what we're suggesting is, we only go to the mandated requirement, but that we believe because of the opportunity with the Ride Choice. And the Ride Choice area would include which areas?
The Ride Choice area would include, would be citywide.
Okay. And then that, how much, how much would that cost the city per ride?
A Ride Choice trip costs us, well, it would, it will cost us between $15 and $20 a trip.
Okay. And as far as an individual who wants to request those services, what's the difference as far as what they would have to do?
So, with, with DALLA Ride, right now, you have to call 24 hours in advance to be able to make that trip. And then you get a van and you have to share the trip. With Ride Choice, you can call, if you're at the doctor's office and you need to go home, you can call right from there. It gives you a lot more flexibility to make that trip. And then you can, you can call, they'll pick you up, and that's a $3 trip, and you're, you have your cab or your Uber to yourself. It's not a shared trip.
So, in some ways, even by offering the Ride Choice, with really kind of using the Lifts and Ubers of the world, actually becomes, in some way, it's, it's less cost to the city, and it's more flexible.
It's more, it's more freedom.
Freedom.
More flexible in their travel. They're not so structured in, in how they travel.
So, I was just trying to make the distinction there between the two.
On the DALLA Ride, is there, not all Ride Choices are equipped for handicap or?
There are, there's.
Is there?
There, so, there's some of the cab companies that do have wheelchair-accessible vans. And that's something we monitor because we need to maintain that equity in our, in our transit. So, and there's one provider, I can't remember who it is now, who is buying more handicap-accessible, wheelchair-accessible vans for their fleet.
Are the paratransit and DALLA Ride, I think, are they all equipped for handicap or?
All the vehicles, all the vehicles that you see with the Valley Metro logo on it, they are all handicap-accessible.
So, just looking at the contracted services, funding source, so we have, we get a lot of Prop 400 dollars that help offset our costs, pretty significant Prop 400 dollars. So, it seems like if we're, if some of our ongoing challenges are going to be managing paratransit growth and the DALLA Ride and so forth, why would we not then extend the services for the fixed bus route and the paratransit when we get funding for those so that we're not putting city funds, so it's not costing us $4 million a year? It looks like we would extend our bus routes and extend the paratransit where we are getting funding from Prop 400, assuming that we'll get a Prop 500 to replace 400, and that we'll continue to get funding. But if we're, if we're getting funding that's offsetting our costs, then why wouldn't we push more of that versus the stuff that's really costing us a lot of money?
So, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking, why don't we put more of our Prop 400 funding into our bus routes and not into our DALLA Ride?
Correct.
Okay. And we can, the, one of the, one of the things is, Valley Metro, a couple years ago, they went through a performance standards and measures program. As a result of, the Prop 400 program is audited periodically, and the auditors wanted a more, they wanted more performance measures for the system so that the bus service that was being employed, using, deployed using the, the sales tax was being the most effective and efficient that we could put out there. So, as part of those measures, it's looking at how to add service, there's a criteria for adding new service that, they, if you're going to fund it through Prop 400, you have to, they look at that criteria, and then they rank it with all the other requests from all the other cities for bus service. Most of our Prop 400 routes are, funded routes are kind of, well, there, a lot of our Prop 400 routes, a lot of, some of those routes are on lower-performing routes, like Power Road, Williams Field, Elliott Road and that area through there. So, we can try to add more service to beef that up, but it's still not going to take, not going to necessarily deal with that, address the DALLA Ride issue because we still have to provide that service.
Well, and I guess, you know, really, if you look at the difference between the paratransit and the Ride Choice, you know, we're getting funding from Prop 400 for paratransit, but we're not for Ride Choice. So, why wouldn't we push more of the paratransit out than we would the Ride Choice? I guess that, ultimately, that's what I'm getting at, is how, how do you take that $4 million of taxpayer money and make it, and utilize it in the most efficient, effective way?
If we, so, if we were to look at taking DALLA Ride to the federal required minimum, our federal required service area, that would be one part of it. Then if we, because right now, we open up Ride Choice to everybody. If we, if we kind of rethought how we did Ride Choice and made everybody be ADA certified for Ride Choice, we could use Prop 400 money to offset those Ride Choice costs. That is an option we have. And we're balancing that with what we have programmed in Prop 400 and how much money we have left allocated to us through the next seven years.
I think you articulated the choice. So, it's the, the choice between routes that are, we have today, but we've, in the past, have either had to reduce service or frequency. are, we have today, but we've, in the past, have either had a reduced service or frequency.
Correct.
And now, looking into the future, they will become Prop 400 eligible.
Right.
And so we are looking at using those funds to add service, to increase frequency. We think that's other option that we just talked about, by reducing the paratransit service area, but with the advent of ride choice having more options, and being able to spread that across a larger part of the city, we think that's the fair trade-off, right? We can use the Prop 400 dollars to improve the service levels of existing routes, and maybe add a few routes in the future.
Add a few routes.
Versus, and then on the paratransit side, is kind of reducing the federally mandated requirement, paratransit service, which is significantly higher. Of course, frankly, we'd love to see even those who are using that Dial-A-Ride service to move even to ride choice, you know, that would be good. But we were required, if they requested, to provide that service within that mandated area. But obviously, one of the benefits of the new era of, with Uber and Lyft and others, is the opportunity to have that service citywide, that's, I think that's what Metro's trying to work through, that, that, so we can have that provided for the whole service, for the whole city, and that provides a lot less service for us. So we're trying to deal with that, and that model, by really promoting the ride choice option versus the paratransit option, the Dial-A-Ride option, we think that'll save us significant dollars. Plus, we think it's, it's a higher level of service for our residents. And then with the Prop 400 dollars, the way we're looking at, we've looked at those from a policy perspective, is trying to improve our bus service throughout the city, both whether it's frequency, as well as the opportunity to add new routes in the future. And some of that will actually help us set up for the possibility, you have to establish a demand for service before you can add additional light rail also. So that's, that's kind of the big, I guess, all the pieces, that's how we've imagined that they all come together, if that makes sense.
Any other questions from council? Oh, you need to finish, right?
I, I just need to finish real quick, and this kind of maybe gets to part of Council Member Thompson's issue, is so, for our short-range transit plan, as we talked about, is being able to add service into Mesa. In the last economic downturn, we eliminate, we cut a lot of service that we've never restored back. And so we have some opportunities in the next couple of years with some of our routes that we currently fund locally, that will transition to being funded by Prop 400. So what we'd like to do is reinvest those routes into service improvements for routes that were cut. So next fiscal year, fiscal year '20, we'll have a very section, a very small section of Baseline Road, we have about a mile of Baseline Road that has bus service, and Alma School, those two service areas will go to be funded by Prop 400. We want to reinvest that money into making improvements to service on Mesa Drive, and to add Sunday service on the buzz, because Sunday service is really an area we also really lack in, we have a lot of routes that don't have Sunday service. And then Gilbert Road will make improvements too naturally as part of, part of the natural Prop 400 funding. Then in fiscal year '21, we want to take Broadway Road, transition that to Prop 400 funding, and improve service on that. And that's important to improve that service, because as we're looking at the Fiesta District AA, we want to be able to add that service to increase ridership, to make that competitive at, at a federal grant process, possibly. And then extend service on Baseline Road, increase service on Stapley Road, and improve weekend service on Power Road. And then fiscal year '22, University Drive will transition, and we want to extend service on the, on Mesa Drive, and then look at adding a new route, either on Bell Vista or Greenfield, and this is part of one of the requests that came out of Imagine Mesa, is to have additional north-south routes east of Gilbert Road. So this is one of the options that, one of the things we talked about in that committee, and one of the things we want to look forward and work with Valley Metro to identify the best corridor.
You can see, she's also trying to feed all these, all the people light rail.
Yeah. We feed light rail, we feed making future study areas more competitive for funding, and then adding new routes.
All right, I think that's it. Any questions, council? Mayor Giles, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jody, appreciate your hard work. Mr. Hirschberg.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council, Mark Hirschberg, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. With 205 parks and basins covering more than 2,500 acres, nine aquatic centers, six recreation and community centers, the convention center, the amphitheater, the cemetery, Dobson Ranch Golf Course, three community fishing lakes, two spring training facilities, maintenance of 4.3 million square feet of building space, and thousands of recreation programs offered every year, I'm proud to be part of a team that contributes to a healthy and vibrant community by providing exceptional experiences to those who live, work, and play in Mesa. You can see the vision and mission of the department, which we updated over the course of the last year, working with the community, and you all, and our staff, through our strategic planning process. Some of the accomplishments over the last year that I wanted to highlight, and of course, these are, wouldn't be possible without partnerships from other departments within the city, most notably Beth Hunning and the staff in engineering, so thanks to them and their support for working with us to accomplish these. The Pioneer Park renovation, Greenfield Park and Community Fishing Lake renovation, completion of the Eagles Community Center, Red Mountain Center restroom and landscape improvements, the Climen Park renovation and improvements, new Ramada at Ranch West Park, irrigation improvements at Harmony and Wood Glen Parks, and court, basketball court replacement at Jefferson Park. Can see some of our performance measures there, our participation by season continues to grow, and year after year. We just had our first day of summer registration last week, and between the hours of 8:30 and 5:00 p.m. last Monday, we took more than 1,700 registrations, 90% of those occurring online for this summer's program. So we expect to see that number of 213,000 from last year, those participants continue to rise this summer as well. The number of permitted uses of PRCF facilities, you'll start to see a slight decline in January, and I want to make sure you understand that this is field reservations, aquatic center reservations, Ramada reservations, and that decline is not related to less demand, that's a change in management, where Mesa Public Schools started taking reservations and management of their sports fields directly. So now little leagues and youth sports groups such as those are working directly with the school district, so now we're only looking at city facilities, where previous years contained both city and school. Rounds at Dobson Ranch continue to be higher, that, from month to month over the same period last year, and we continue to see that positive trend and revenue tracking the same way. Convention Center continues to do very well, wanted to highlight the black line there highlights the cost recovery of the facility, and we continue to make strides at getting closer and closer to full cost recovery of that facility, so continuing to do well there. Some of the challenges we're facing coming, going forward, we are in the final stages of completing all of the 2012 bond funding projects. Once Eagles Park, which is under construction now, and Signal Butte Park will be starting shortly in the coming months. Once those two projects are done, those funds will be completely expended. As you all continue to get phone calls and emails as I do, we continue to have a lack of adequate lighted fields for youth sports organizations, and even our own internal programs to play, and we continue to try to meet that demand. The ongoing implementation of the minimum wage increases that were a result of voters approving Proposition 206, and those associated costs continue to be a challenge, not only with the frontline staff that the city employs, and lifeguards, camp counselors, et cetera, but also within our labor contracts, we're continuing to see increases there. We continue to address aging infrastructure and a maintenance backlog, and then increase competition for some of those frontline positions that I mentioned, camp counselors, lifeguards, everybody's competing for the same market, and a limited market of those trained employees to, to work with those groups. Some significant budget changes that we've proposed for fiscal year 1819 is, most notably, the increase in the park maintenance contract that was, we brought forward to in February, this will be the first full year, $600,000 roughly. We do continue to analyze those costs as those contracts come forward of bringing operations in-house versus contracting, and we are still seeing continued value in contracting. The addition of one park ranger to help us meet the growing demands and high use that we're seeing in our facilities, as we've renovated and made improvements. Additional staff support for youth sports, and the New Eagles Park coming online, the increase, minimal, increased support for special events, and an increase to help support the no, increased inclusion service requests we're getting within our adaptive programs. The five-year expense trend, most of these increases are due to the CIP O and M coming online and moving into the operating budget as a result of projects being completed. And just to highlight that a little bit closer, you'll see an increase in the resource management that area, that has contributed to $800,000 of that O and M coming online for completed projects, the $600,000 in landscape contracts are the two biggest factors there. And then at the convention center, you see a slight decline. Part of that is, as we've been talking about, making improvements and modernizing that facility, we've moved a million dollars that was previously carried over from that 5.2 into a project, to start addressing some of those improvements, and we're working on getting pricing in quotes for those improvements now. In addition, there's a one-time reduction of expenses from concerts that are offset by revenue of half a million dollars. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? Mayor Giles, any questions? All right, no, hearing none, we'll proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirschberg. All righty. Item number two is acknowledge receipt of, receipt of board minutes, is there a motion to that effect? There's been a motion by Councilmember Glover, seconded by Mr. Freeman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose? A motion passes. Item three, hear reports on meetings and conference attendance, council? All right. Item four, it's the schedule of future meetings and general information, Mr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So our next study session will be next Thursday, April 26th. We have a lot of items on, so it will probably be an extended study session, so look forward to visiting with you then, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Come, 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 come.
All righty, I need a motion for adjournment. Motion by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Thompson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Studies.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, mayor. The meeting's adjourned, thank you.